I'll call a meeting to order if you would all rise please and join me in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, Councilman Judith Dunley and Brenda Kinzer are absent for personal reasons. I would entertain a motion to excuse that absence at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to excuse Judith Dunley and Brenda Kinzer from the meeting tonight.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilman Johnson and seconded by Councilman Owens. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. That puts us to the consent calendar. I'd like to bring council's attention to the fact that item G had a typo in it in the original packet, so you have late material on your desk. They had an incorrect name in motion two of that which we corrected for the paper copy. And would anyone care to move on the consent calendar?
Mayor, I approve that we approve the consent calendar A through H with the fix on G.
Okay, motion by Councilman Carnegie.
Second?
Okay, the motion was moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar items A through H, including the late material on item G. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent calendar carries unanimously. Now we're at our public comment period. I'm guessing that we're gonna have some tonight. I'll remind everybody that you have three minutes. When you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Remember that you're addressing the council, not each other, and to keep your comments, it's not a time for cross-examination or argument. So at this time, I'll open it to public comment. Who would like to be first? You guys are getting to be pros, so.
And yes, I have this timed too, within three minutes, so please don't give me a 30-second warning. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Mary Anderson and I reside at 928 Beachley Road in Cedro-Woolley. I am here tonight to speak about the Cedro-Woolley Library and the mayor's proposal. First, I'd like you to look at some statistics I have assembled for you. The national average that communities spend on their libraries is between 2% to 3% of their overall budget. This year in Skagit County, Mount Vernon will spend 2.3%. Burlington will spend 2.4%, Anna Cortez will spend 2.6%. And in Cedro-Woolley, on the city's most publicly-used building, the city will spend 1.4%. I would like to say more about this, but the clock is ticking. Let's head to the mayor's proposal for the library. It is proposed that the city council take on $3 to $4 million of councilmanic debt to build a new building. Based on Burlington's costs a few years ago, I suspect that the real cost of a new building will be closer to $8 to $10 million. I suppose the city council could take on $8 to $10 million, but that would leave nothing left with which to borrow in the event of a city emergency. So where will the remaining money come from? Will city residents have to support a bond when the councilmanic money runs out? Please turn to the packet before you. This packet contains the assessment of the mayor's proposal by the attorney for the Central Skagit Library. This packet was obtained online at the Central Skagit Library website, available to the public. Please turn to page three. There it is in black and white, highlighted for you, under the mayor's proposal, quote, "The city would close the current city library, cease providing library services, and transfer its existing collection, equipment, and furnishings to the new library," unquote. That makes the mayor's intent quite clear. Now please turn to the last page of your packet, which is the Central Skagit Library's report on the meeting between their attorney and our city attorney. Number D, I've labeled them for you, states, quote, "We, Central Skagit Library, expressed interest in ownership at some point. City is not opposed to CSR ownership after debt is paid off," unquote. So after the city residents have paid for this new building with a councilmanic debt and presumably a bond if necessary, the Central Skagit Library will end up owning it. Let's be very clear on this. According to the mayor's proposal, the residents of Cedro-Woolley will build and furnish a new library and hand over their 100-plus-year-old collection, and in the end, they will own nothing. We will pay this large debt and own nothing at the end. How does this serve the residents of Cedro-Woolley? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name's Chloe Werner, 1231 Warner Street. I have an adult family home there. I have some concerns that have been getting stronger and stronger as this issue keeps growing and growing. And my observations are not as detailed or as accurate as the lady before me, but I thoroughly agree with her. As a businessman, I'm used to doing income projections, cost analysis, and seeing what the risk-reward percentages are. The more I've researched into this, the more muddy it seems to get. I cannot find, and maybe it's my fault, but I can't find any simplified, detailed cost analysis for the whole thing other than the numbers that the lady just described. As a businessperson, that bothers me. As a consumer of the library, we have one of the best libraries in the county, if not the best. We have a dedicated staff. They go above and beyond for service to our clientele. And we have a jewel there, and it seems to me, based on what little I know, that we are putting that in jeopardy. We have something that the city of Cedro-Woolley can be very, very proud of, and it seems to me that as we go along, we're putting that in jeopardy. When I first started getting involved and paying attention to this, this issue, it was a few scattered voices that were complaining about the proposed plan. Then it grew into several voices, a chorus. And now we have a choir that is singing loud and clear, and I would implore the council, and you, Mr. Mayor, to listen very closely, because it's not just about the library. It's about the fundamental governmental process in a small town. And small-town government, as we all know, can be very, very good, or it can be very, very nasty and poor. And I would urge you to consider what the citizens are saying and take into consideration what we as a city, what we as a community, and what we as taxpayers will have when we make your final decision.
Thank you.
Good evening. So I'm Christine Johnson, 801 McLean Drive, still a city resident. I'm speaking against giving the city library to the county, the Central Skagit County Library District. I emailed you all the one-page report from the district's attorney, Dan Gottlieb, which summarized the recent meeting between him and the city attorney regarding the mayor's library proposal. On the district's website, there's also a memorandum from Mr. Doug Gottlieb, which gives a good background for understanding the district's position in negotiations with the city. It's very interesting to read that Mr. Gottlieb believes Mayor Wagner's proposal stems from the city having decided to cease operations of their own library. This echoes what a district board member said in August of 2014, that the city would like to offload the library. In the one pager I sent you, though, the city agrees to contracting, not partnering, with the district, and that the city may have one representative on the district board. The district wants to limit their expenses at the Cedro-Woolley location. Like I stated last time, they need to have money available for the big, like, library they're going to build, and that's where many of our books could end up. There are several other interesting points, but the major one is that the district now expects to be given the building that the city is remodeling or building for them. So to review, the city will be given the library contents valued at $2 million, and now a building worth $4 to $8 million, according to most estimates. And for our $6 to $10 million, we get one board member? You know, it just doesn't seem fair. So I've looked at this proposal from every angle, and it still makes no sense to me. I've asked friends who are attorneys to look at it, and it makes no sense to them either. One of your primary responsibilities is to safeguard the city's assets. And I just cannot believe that the majority of our city residents would be in favor of giving away $6 to $10 million of our assets just so the city can get out of the library business. So I'm asking you very respectfully, so please, please, think very carefully about this, and please give it the careful consideration it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
My name's Tony Tomassino. I live at 704 Sauk Mountain Drive, and I'm a citizen of Cedro-Woolley. Couple of terms I hear flying around is lawyers are getting involved and people saying little I know. It's really troublesome that people don't know a whole lot about this whole library thing that's going on. So when I sat and thought about exactly, you know, what's important here, I'm thinking what's important here is fiduciary responsibility. You know, when the public chooses an elected official, the public's putting its trust and confidence in that official, okay? And that official has a fiduciary responsibility to the people who put them in office. And that's a really great responsibility that we hand to you people. Now, a fiduciary is someone who acts for another, and that's why our trust and our confidence we place in you. Now, public officials also exercise the power of the collective will when they adopt and enforce regulations. Regulations intrude on individuals' prerogatives. Essentially, in a given situation, what an individual wants to do must yield to the concept of the greater good of the community, the community being Cedro-Woolley. So let's look at some of the fiduciary responsibilities of you, the elected officials. One is diligence, and that diligence means the duty to do a good job. The law speaks in terms of a fiduciary using his or her best efforts on behalf of those served. And those served are the citizens of Cedro-Woolley. Two, the responsibility and loyalty of putting others' interests first. Now, hearing directly from the public about what people believe to be in our best interest is really another helpful tool. And I don't know that that's really been thoroughly done here in the case of this library business. Now, a fiduciary is forbidden from acting in any manner adverse or contrary to the interests of those he or she serves. Number three is honesty. Honesty basically means being open and transparent. A person acting in a fiduciary capacity is held to a very high standard of honesty and full disclosure. Now, when I hear that our lawyer, Cedro-Woolley's lawyer, is meeting with whatever his other office lawyer, and people don't seem to have much representation, to me, that's not really open and transparent. And I would note that when the public places power in the hands of its public officials, the public relies on those officials. We rely on you to exercise your power prudently, along with our wishes. And if the public differs with you on a point, it's not your job to insult us. We didn't come here for that. We didn't put you in office to insult us. And so I would hope that everybody in the city council would think about their fiduciary obligations to the people that put them in office.
Thank you, Tony. Anybody else tonight?
I'm Margaret Miller. I live at 1227 Independence. I just want to say that we have a wonderful public library here, and I'm strongly opposed to building a new one. And before this issue goes any farther, that maybe we should put it to a public vote to the taxpayers of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Anyone else going once? There we go. We got three at once now.
Gary Booty, 1035 Clifford Street. I've never been to one of your meetings before. I go to the library here regularly. I really support what they have done there. I've really appreciated the ability to work with the staff there. I'd certainly hate to see that deteriorate at all. I'm not sure where you're going as far as, in the end, hiring, firing of staff, where you're going as far as a building's concerned. I'd like to see a lot more information put out there as to what exactly your bottom line is. I totally agree with what I've heard here tonight. It seems to me like you're really putting the cart before the horse, and we really need to think about putting this out as a vote to the public.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary.
Deborah Peterson from the library. I just wanted to say that you have an announcement in your packet. We are again doing our very successful, hopefully, repeat of last year's City Works Day. And all the city departments are coming down. They're bringing all the heavy equipment. And last year, we had 130 kids, plus all their parents and families. So I consider it STEM in action. So we're hoping that we get lots of people to come. And the invitation is going out to the schools. Since we're doing it at a slightly different time of the year, it would be kind of nice to have kids there, since we're doing this for the kids. So I'm hoping the schools will bring classes to tour. But they got to see the cameras of the sewer department. A couple of them got arrested and released. Anyway, lots of fun was had by all, and so I'm really glad that the city department heads had a good time, I think. So I'm hoping everyone will come. That's gonna be on April 19th. It's Tuesday. It'll be 11 to 2 at the municipal park next to the library. And the city's also gonna have an announcement for their new splash park. So some of the prototypes for that will be on display as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
My name's Larry Stiles, 1227 Independence Boulevard. I don't know why we're going through this process that you've put forward. I don't know what the end result is supposed to be. We have an excellent library here that can stand up with anybody. I personally have wondered why this county doesn't have a more integrated library system. But it doesn't, and it's been chosen to remain that way. What the steps that I see happening now, and as much depth as I have been able to glean from it, it seems it should be going the other way. If we want to consolidate these functions, we've got more horsepower here in Cedro-Woolley than we do in the rural county. We should be bringing them into our system instead of turning our system over to them. And as I say, if that's not what we're trying to do, then it needs to be presented to us. What are we trying to do? Are we trying to get out of the library business? If so, make your case. It's not happening so far.
Thank you, Larry. Anybody else? Well, thank you all. At this time, I will close the public comment and move on to unfinished business, item five, spray park update and professional services agreement. And that is... Where's Nathan?
Well, we've got a group for you tonight. Nathan's here to talk a little bit about the details. But we wanted to give you an update on where we are procedurally as well. So the action item tonight is actually the selection of the landscape architect. The context leading up to that is really the timing for the RCO funding process. So we're about six weeks away from the technical review, and in order to achieve that, we have to have at least the conceptual design work done by the landscape architect. So, you know, our timeframe's a bit compressed. Of course, this was in the strategic objectives. It's in our comp plan, and it's also in our budget for this year to go through the design process. So it shouldn't be news to anybody that we're working on it. The consultant that we selected to help us through the process also worked us through a site selection process. It was really not a difficult choice. We looked at a downtown location. We looked at the Ball Field location here. We looked at Bingham Park. We looked at Riverfront Park, and we looked at Memorial Park. And we also did that with the rep from RCO. And going through that process, there's really only one park that meets the minimum requirements to support a spray park, which includes sewer connectivity, public bathrooms, not being built in a fallible area, you know, those sorts of things. So Memorial Park is the location that we're working with. The next step, then, is to come up with some concepts. The April 19th City Works Day is what we've identified as the public open house to talk about the redevelopment of Memorial Park, get public input, any of the ideas the community has, get those reincorporated into the design work to be able to bring that back to the council prior to the technical review in May. So busy time, but our goal has been clear from the outset, which is the RCO 2016 funding for 2017 construction cycle. So the scope of the project at this point is installation of a spray park at Memorial, revisions to the playground, that is, a complete reconstruction of the playground, as well as the addition of more parking at that park around the perimeter that will have dual purpose. It will clearly serve the spray park on a busy day, but it will also serve the community center and the senior center, as well as the library. And then we're looking at how to create some green space connectivity between the park and the library itself to kind of address our parking lot issues. You know, we've had three vehicle versus building incidents in the last 24 months-ish. So we think we've got an issue there that we could resolve a little bit with design work, and more parking would be helpful. So that's kind of the big picture, Nathan. Would you want to talk at all about the site selection, anything?
Like Aaron said, we looked at Riverfront, Bingham, Memorial, and then Metcalf right out here, and then a site downtown. And ultimately, Memorial Park scored the highest because Bingham Park was, you know, really visible. It had some good qualities, but just not enough parking there for the amount of folks that we think will be using this facility. Riverfront was out mainly because of the unavailability of sewer down there. So the downtown site didn't work, and then out here, there's just so much stuff going on out here already, and we were concerned about a big kid, you know, knocking a homerun over the fence into a, you know, a bunch of kids playing in the waters wouldn't be a good scenario, so. And we've had good success with what the Rotary's done out here and what we were able to do over at Bingham, and Riverfront's in pretty good shape. Memorial's are really, really our last of the larger parks that really need some revitalization and help, so we're leaning that way, so.
Some of the 30 questions. We've also talked, at least preliminarily, about spray park, you know, conceptual design, and there are several choices that get made. The first choice is what you do with the water. And in our case, we only really have the option of what's called spray-to-waste. The recirculating systems are just beyond our economic reach. They also would be challenging for us to staff. So, you know, Mount Vernon, the one that's going in concrete, Burlington, Fairhaven, the one that Anna Cortez is building, they're all spray-to-waste parks. So that's where the necessity of sewer becomes so clear. But then the question is, well, what do you want it to feel like? You know, what's gonna work? And at least a preliminary concept at Memorial Park, and that's something that the landscape architecture team, working with the Otis Group, and then ultimately through our public process, will have to figure out. But we're thinking something that's more, well, more like the Olympia model. So not toys that squirt water, but water that's beautiful in and of itself. That is something that would be of enjoyment to the senior center. It would also be an amenity to the community center, ultimately with that south wall turned into full-light French doors. And you could imagine that opened up in the summer with the water feature, but just as much fun for kids on the warm days. So we're trying to figure out how we can get multiple, you know, the mixed-use functionality out of a feature in the center of that park. And that's really the design team's challenge. So process-wise, we're looking for action to get the Philbin Group out of Boe under contract to begin work. And then the next step is you'll see the results at the open house and then at the council after that. So open house on the 19th, council meeting the following week, and then turn around for technical review in May. The actual full-blown design doesn't actually occur until after the award of funds. So there's, you know, most of the work happens after that decision point. But we have to have enough to be able to show the RCO group what we're doing so they can score it and we can come up with a rank and be competitive.
How much of the funds are gonna be awarded?
50%.
So what is the cost of the, what's the estimated cost of the park?
We're working with a budget number, an estimated number of about $400,000.
Okay. And who, where's the money gonna come from to maintain it?
That will be funded through our Parks Department, just like everything else.
Okay. Which is already spread pretty thin right now, right?
Absolutely.
Well, I want to go on the record to say that I know this is something that's been discussed. I know it was discussed back in 2012, I believe, and it was tabled. You know, that's in my ward, and for much as I would love to see that park come alive, I am a little concerned about the cost of what it's gonna take to make it come alive, especially since we had discussion about monies that are gonna be needed for the sewer plant, monies that are gonna be needed for public safety. I would encourage the council, I guess, to consider, seriously consider whether or not this is prudent to be spending this money at this time.
Now, may I just add to alleviate your somewhat of a concern? We're going through, what is it? Can you spell out what RCO is? The process in which we're getting, sort of like, I would imagine this is sort of like the street projects we've done on the major routes, where we've leveraged small dollars and got a big win, I guess, through granting, isn't that correct? Is that sort of what the RCO is?
RCO is a recreation. RCO is a recreation and conservation organization. So they funded Mount Vernon Spray Park. They funded two phases of development of that park. Their maximum grant is 50%. So, you know, what we've anticipated in terms of fundraising will be a combination of RCO for 50%, city capital dollars either using REIT or Park Impact fee money. And our Park Impact fee money has certainly increased rather substantially here with redevelopment and is limited to this type of use that is new things, not maintenance of existing things. And then we really need project partners. You know, for RCO to score it well, we'll need our community groups to come in and say, yes, we agree, this is a priority item, and we'd like to be part of that project. And then the fourth component is we anticipate pretty significant in-kind work on this as well. So the site prep work, the parking lot, the playground installation, we'll do that like we've done our other park work. And that would be credited as part of that, all of that work in as RCO match.
And then not too long ago, we had a Parks Board. And as a part of that board, there was a, I guess, a preliminary master plan created for that park already. So there's a lot of ideas, and there was a lot of enthusiasm at the time. A lot of the attention was diverted at the time we built the skate park. But I imagine some of those partners that said they were going to participate and help build and fund that would be back again to revitalize Memorial Park. So I can't imagine them saying, you know, we loved that idea two years ago, but we're not going to do it now. So I think that maybe that fear is, as we go along, you know, it may be realized, but I can't imagine it is.
This is the first time we've advanced the spray park to the point of design.
Well, I guess the spray park is a new idea, but the master grant, I mean, with the bridge between the library and the park, the playground revitalization, I mean, those ideas already exist on paper here in the city.
Right, that's true.
Is the concept on this just to be shots coming up out of the ground, kind of like a concrete slab and things like that? So what's the vandalism projection on this? Kids going to come in with their skateboards? And how are you going to prevent things like that, vandalism to it? Kids taking quarters and pushing them down in the...
Yeah, yeah.
Things like that?
Those roads or bridges have certainly been crossed in other communities. You know, one of the things we're doing at Memorial Park that's going to be very positive is we're putting a caretaker in there. Here, we're only about a month and a half away from having a resident in the park. So another element of this we're anticipating would be fencing in the park to help limit the ingress and egress through kind of specific corridors, along with new sidewalks that are ADA compliant. So I think we'll see a significant reduction in those types of behaviors, just as we have seen most recently in Bingham Park. And, you know, you may recall the Bingham Park of three years ago was very underutilized, not attractive. It was those things you're describing. And today, when the sun comes out, it's full of kids. It's clean. You know, the caretakers there are keeping track of it. The RV element, which was a new element to our park, is being used. You know, it's been very popular. So, you know, my view is our experience has been investments in the park have been immediately replayed with more use and vitality. So, you know, I guess I'm surprised to hear some reticence. This is not a new thing. In fact, the city council approved a contract for, I think, about $20,000 here just a couple of months ago to kick off the planning effort. The spray park at no point has been shelved that I'm aware of. What was slowed down was the playground revitalization at Memorial Park, and that was because we thought we had had a private committed partner to that, and we didn't, so.
Well, a couple of months ago, we weren't looking at some of the issues that we're looking at now. Regarding the sewer, you know, regarding public safety.
But sometimes, isn't there only dedicated funds or park funds could be used for park? We couldn't transfer those to the sewer. We couldn't transfer those to public safety. I mean, this is park money being used.
But what's budgeted is not nearly what's going to be spent.
No, that's where the community, I mean, it's all going to, you know, it all depends on what the community puts into this. If there's no support in the community, they're not going to give, and we're not going to have, you know, revitalize park there. So, and we're not going to go ahead and, you know, build it without any, you know, communities support.
The transportation projects, I think, is a fair analogy. We're getting ready to put a new project in that we paid $58,000 to leverage about $2.5 million. Had we not done the design work ahead of time, which is what this is about, getting the design, we wouldn't be eligible as a project because we wouldn't have anything to show. We'd say, oh, I got a great idea now that there's money out there. If we don't get our designs in the process, then we never get anything. We're last on the list, and we've seen those funds go to other communities over time. These types of funds specifically, we, you know, should have been capturing in the past, and I think we've learned a hard lesson. But I agree with Brett. Projects like the Little League field out here, projects like the skate park, projects like Bingham, if you don't get started on them, you never get there. And that's what this is, is the ability to start and show a design and then be competitive with other communities. Otherwise, they get it and we don't.
I mean, there has to also be some quality of life, and I feel like this is a really important part of that. I mean, it's tough to do for the kids. I mean, it's a beautiful place to hang out, not cause trouble, hopefully, with a caretaker there. And, I mean, if the funds aren't an issue, then I don't, I mean, you're saying that's pretty much with the RCO and park funds, it should be pretty much a done deal.
Well, let me be clear. On the capital side, there's no question. We have funds that are limited in how they can be used. And I believe that what Brett said is accurate. That is, a combination of RCO funds, our limited, our limited-use capital funds, and community support with our in-kind work will get the job done. There will be increased maintenance costs. There's no question about that. And those are discretionary dollars that you could choose to spend any way you like. It will take our crew time that you could choose to spend doing something else. So, you know, these are choices about priorities. And, you know, I had understood that this was one of your 2016 fundamental top priority objectives to achieve. That's why we're doing it. So the conversation we're having now is a little different about, really, I think it's about whether this is, in fact, a 2016 priority of the city council. And that's your prerogative. RCO is a two-year cycle. The last time we were funded was in 1991.
Now, two or three of us councilmen are new, and we had nothing to do with the past business about the water park. But I don't agree with the location that the water park is being situated because the library is there, the community center's there, and the senior center's there. And it's going to put a lot of pressure on them, going to be more traffic, more noise. I just don't agree with that. And another thing is, I know we've got a monetary cost to put the spray park in, but what is your overall cost? What is your upkeep, your maintenance? I'd like to hear from other people that has that spray park already and just get an idea of what their overhead is and the cost. You know, we do have a limit, what we can support in this city, and I want to be careful that we don't get in over our head. It'd be nice for the kids to have a place to play, but I just don't agree with the location.
So the motion is on page 60?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table at this time. No?
If you table it, then you're going for the next cycle, which is, that's your prerogative.
If we fail here, then we don't get it for the next cycle. Is that correct?
Well, no, I mean, the next cycle's a whole nother, I mean, it's a whole different opportunity. We just would want to let RCO know. I mean, we literally had them up here a week and a half ago, showing them the sites, you know, prepping for this conversation. So, you know, this would be a major departure from everything we've represented up to tonight.
We are asking for a plan. We are wanting to put this plan to the RCO. If we say no tonight, then we are not making this.
Then it won't happen. That's the bottom line. It won't happen.
The Philbin Group just doing a landscaping plan? Or are they doing the whole schematic with the parking, all of the concepts of it?
Well, you know, we've already pretty well worked out the parking component as part of the last process. So the Philbin Group will be taking that and refining it, maybe from a landscape architect's perspective versus an engineer's perspective. And of course, adding then the playground element as well as the spray park element. And of course, the playground element was actually in our budget this year. That would be a deferred cost item because we wouldn't spend today what we could spend next year and get a 50% match credit for. So...
And then when we did this plan, this was also consulted with the senior center, isn't that correct, when we did the first master plan? So the senior center is well aware of this park, not the spray park, but the actual playground revitalization. So the playground there is an asset. Bringing people to Cedar Woolly to use a park is an asset. It's not going to be detrimental to the community center. Maybe more people will use it. It's not going to be detrimental to the library there. Maybe more people will come and be patrons of the library. You know, there's Miller Center, Community Center in Seattle. Beautiful, I would say more aesthetically appealing for adults, but it's a spray park. Kids love it. It brings the old to come watch the waterworks, and the kids get to play. I mean, you're going to see probably more people use the senior center with a park like that.
I also think that the location is almost perfect, if not. I mean, because of the senior center and the community center, I mean, why not have, I mean, intergenerational experiences there? And, I mean, to me, it sounds great. I mean, I don't see the problem with having it there.
Well, I think if we miss this opportunity, we will lose it, but we can't talk about it all night, so.
I guess one last thing. Historically, that was where the waiting pool was, I think. What's your map show, 1919? I don't know what it is.
What year was it? 19, that was when it was built. The plan came out earlier than that. I thought it was in the 20s. Yes, it's, was it 41? Yeah. No, I've got the plan in my office that shows the tennis courts, which of course were, is where the library is today. And then the waiting pool is ironically not far off from where the spray park of tomorrow would likely be located.
So waterworks in that park are as old-hat as anything else?
Yeah, just not to any of us.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve. Let me scroll back a little. Move to authorize Mayor Wagner to execute the attached professional service agreement number 2015-PS-19 with Philbin Group of Boe, Washington, to provide professional landscape design service to Cedar Woolly Public Works Department in the amount not to exceed $5,000.
Second.
The motion was bailed by Councilman Sandstrom, seconded by Councilman Cornege, to authorize me to execute the attached professional services agreement number 2015-TAC-PS-TAC-19 with the Philbin Group of Boe, Washington, to provide professional landscape design services to Cedar Woolly Public Works Department in an amount not to exceed $5,000. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we have three in favor and two opposed, being Councilman Johnson and Councilman Owen. So the motion carries. So we'll go straight to committee reports. And Sergeant Harris?
Good evening. We just got a couple of things going on. We've got, we're in the final stages of picking up another reserve police officer. So we're hoping to get them on board sometime next month, where they come up and fortunately volunteer their time for 16 hours a month to be a commissioned police officer. So that'd be kind of an added bonus for us. Secondly, we've got Officer Daniel Eddy just finished three weeks down at the State Patrol Academy for Commercial Vehicle Inspection School, which will give him the ability here soon to conduct safety inspections on the semi-trucks coming down Highway 9 and through the city, so he can stop and see how they're doing and work on that. That's what I have for you.
And I'll just add for the audience that Sergeant Eddy is one of our most productive officers, so we chose him specifically for that purpose.
Yes, we did. Actually, last year, he made over 1,000 traffic stops on his own, so he did quite well. So, and he's usually the one out at Cascade Middle School in the mornings, upsetting the parents, dropping off their kids for speeding. So he's doing a pretty good job for us.
John?
Well, if the council recalls that our last council meeting, the council passed a resolution approving 28 new units out of a soft amount of U.S. states. We've already got five building permits for that project already received, so moving ahead full speed in the building department. And as far as the planning commission, they had a public hearing on March 15th reviewing the critical areas ordinance and recommended approval. They recommended approval of updates to the capital facilities element and other elements in the comprehensive plan that are all working their way to the city council in the next few weeks and months. They'll be working on the transportation element at the next city, or the next planning commission meeting in April. So earlier in the year, I'll just give you an update on our UGA expansion proposal that we sent to the county. They're having, the county planning commission is having a hearing on April 5th on that city support. It's encouraged, as now county staff is waffling on their previous recommendation to recommend our full expansion as we brought to them. And they're now thinking of not recommending like 35 acres not be included or something to that extent. So we're a little bit dismayed that all through the process that we've been working with the county, the staff has been supportive of it, and now all of a sudden, we've changed their mind to a certain part of it. So again, I thank the council for their support. I'll remind them that, remind the county that the planning commission and cities worked on this project for nine months or more, numerous public hearings. And after really long and, we had a long process where we had a lot of public comments and had a lot of changes based on those public comments, we finally came to a consensus, not just, well, you know, some people are still upset. We no longer were hearing from upset people. Everybody liked the proposal, and now the county thinks otherwise. So I'll keep you updated on this ongoing saga. Lighter note, the Schmooze Fair is coming up. April 14th, the city will be having a booth staffed by the planning department and usually the Chamber of Commerce assists with that. We have some tickets for all the city council members to attend that, should they be able to, or should they like to. And I'll give you a reminder at the April, the first April, the city council meeting about that coming up. And in case, for anybody that's not familiar with it, it's out at one of the tulip sheds out at the Port facility, maybe Port facility, in the evening of April 14th. Now, moving on, the... Now, moving on, the planning department in April, myself and a representative of Mal Foster and Longy and the Port, will be giving a presentation to a planning conference on the process that we went through to designate Golden State as the Center for Innovation and Technology, the annexation process, the planned action process, and where we're at. So we're going to go toot our own horn a little bit on that. Fortunately, Mal Foster is doing most of the pretty pictures and stuff to, have a professional company that's going to make it look real good, so I feel that'll go really well, drum up some positive support and, and community pride for the city of Cedar I think that's all I got for you now.
Okay, thank you, John. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. We had the pre-bid meeting for the Jameson Project today. We had three prime presidents at the meeting, good meeting, and we have about six good-quality contractors on the plan holders list. I expect to receive bids from all of those. That closes on March 31st next week, and apparently goes well, we'll award that. First meeting in April, and construction closes the 34th week in May, complete it by November. We're placing the ad tomorrow for the Ferry Street Overlay Project, and we're looking for that to bid on the 7th of April and start construction around June 1st and complete before Lager Rodeo. And Cascade Trail, David's heavy on the design end of that, we're looking to advertise that in May, and construct that after Lager Rodeo and finish that by September. So all those projects are moving along full speed. We're pretty busy down here right now, lots of smoke coming out, David's going to do it in particular. We also have Locker working on the design phase on the Fruit Dale Project, that's coming along pretty well. We got the grant application submitted, as I mentioned to you, and to retrieve for the ED funding for that project, and I think that's a very positive application with the joint Port-County-City application going in on that. And we're getting ready to start the fence work at Janiki Field Bay Booth Facility. The rain will never stop. We do expect some sun next week, so we're hoping to get going on that. We'll get it surveyed this week and start the post-installation next week. We have that up in about three or four weeks. That's, oh, and tomorrow evening, for anyone who's interested and wants to come, we have the open house for the Hauser Playfield. That was, Harold was kind enough to put a good article on that in the paper today. So we're looking forward to just showing our current plans to the residents of the area. We've mailed to all of the property owners within 500 feet and the other interested parties that we went from past. So we'll be here, public works representatives, and any of you who come, administration, we'll have up on the screens like we did at the open house for the Jameson Project, the current layout for that, and talk about that with residents. Thank you.
What time is that?
That's at 6:00 PM, so it's 6 to 7.
I've got tickets for any of you who want to go to the Schmooze Fair. They used to send them directly to you, but I'm getting the sense that they might not be, since I have a stack, so just let me know if you want tickets.
They're online. If you sign up, they send them to you.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
They've totally changed the process.
Completely different.
Quite a few of them. Extras, I guess. That's it.
I actually have asked for a microphone. I'd like to mention to the council that if any of you have any questions regarding the city financial reports that will be coming out monthly in your packets, just let me know. I'd be glad to get together with you and review the various funds and what they can and can't be used for, and just kind of some general overall things you should be looking for. And I'd also like to take an opportunity to thank the Police Department for work that they've been busy with in my neighborhood. Some less-than-desirable folks have been moved out of a house. I think the police were there every Friday and Saturday night for months, and the code enforcement folks have gotten it cleaned up, and it looks really good, so now on to the duplexes on the corner. Thank you.
One house at a time.
I just wanted to remind everybody about the Wood Fest coming up, April 1st and 2nd, I don't think we have a live reunion before that, at Cascade Middle School, that's Saturday and Sunday. I think it closes early on Sunday, but I just can't, I don't remember the hours, but anyway, at the Chamber, they have the raffle tickets for an arborum that was built, an arbor that was built for a garden by some local artists for five bucks. I have some too, tickets, raffle tickets. That's it.
Julian?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out and sharing your opinion. It's greatly appreciated, and it's good to see you all here. And I also want to state that I went with one of the police officers, Sergeant Daniel McElroy.
McElroy.
And did a ride along, and I must say that it was very educational to see our city through different lenses, so it was very good. I greatly appreciate you taking the opportunity and doing that.
Tuck?
Yes, again, I took my second ride with Officer Hall last Friday, I guess it was, and we had a little more action than we did the last time we were out, and I continue to be impressed how professional those officers are, how courteous they are when they approach somebody. I encourage everybody on the council to take a ride with them. I was so impressed, I'm going to ride the garbage truck tomorrow, so. But again, my hat's off to the Police Department.
Rick?
I think it's been a good sense of the council, yeah, it's nice to have people here to give us another side of what we may not always see or hear from the city side, so, yeah, your input does not go on deaf ears. Continue to show up.
Brett? No? Okay. Well, let's see. Oh, I don't think we have an executive session, no? Thank you all for coming. I guess it's getting to be routine that I thank you for your excellent behavior. You guys are great, and I would echo the remarks to keep on coming, and in particular, keep on coming regardless of it's the library, because there's lots of other things that happen here, and you, I think, just because this issue has brought you in, you're starting to see some of that. So we would like to be this full all the time, and we sell tomorrow. So, with that...
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the council meeting.
And, we're done.